Welcome, everyone. If you're out in the foyer, please make your way in. I call to order the July 15, 2024 special meeting of the City Council of Hermosa Beach.
Last time.
At 12:02 PM.
Swing that hammer down.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. Welcome to our state and county representatives, our neighboring city colleagues, former mayors, council members, commissioners, board members, school district representatives, Beach Cities Health District representatives, and of course, our residents who are in the chambers and watching online. The first item of business is our Pledge of Allegiance, and I did not ask Ms. Gluck if she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, but being our acting school superintendent, I'm sure you're qualified. Ms. Sylvia Gluck, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Your hand over your hands, ready, be dead. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which the stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we have a special treat. Our good friend TJ Breenyak is ready to sing the National Anthem. Take it away, TJ.
Oh, say can we see by the dawn's light what so proudly we rode at the time's last gleaming, whose boughs were as bright as diamonds, whose red stars through the perilous fight, or the red pogs we washed were so proudly streaming, and the rockets were the glare, and the bombs were screaming, giving proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er land and of the free and the home of the free?
Thank you, TJ, and my apologies to everybody. I should have asked you all to rise before TJ started singing. So, good for all of you for understanding that that was the protocol, and for my council colleagues for reminding me. Madam Clerk, I think that brings us to roll call. Would you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember DeToye.
Here.
Councilmember Sammon.
Here.
Mayor Protem Francois.
Here.
Mayor Massey.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Does that bring us to the approval of the agenda?
Yes.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Councilmember DeToye.
Aye.
Councilmember Sammon.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Massey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And what's next on our agenda?
Next, we have public comment. This is a time for members of the public to address the city council on items listed on the agenda only. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and limited to items that are on this agenda. This will be the only public comment taken. And we do have a speaker card. Ira Elman.
Hello, good evening. Ira Elman over in Hermosa Beach. I'm here tonight to voice my disapproval of Dean Francois's possible appointment tonight to be mayor of Hermosa Beach. Some of you may support him because he's next in the alleged rotation, or perhaps he hasn't done anything illegal. However, being a mayor of Hermosa Beach is a privilege and should not go to someone who has displayed numerous moral and judgmental shortcomings. I have some examples. On July 23, Chamber Board President Jessica Akamando sent a personal email to the city council regarding her thoughts and frustrations on the lack of affordable housing in Hermosa Beach. Within three hours, Francois forwarded this email to Ron Newman, Chamber Board member, not to help solving the problem, but likely to humiliate Ms. Akamando. A short time later, this email was forwarded to Kent Allen, likely by Francois or Newman. Should forwarding a private email for likely nefarious reasons be rewarded with the appointment of mayor? While representing the city at this year's resin fundraiser, he accepted a free ticket and tried to pick up at least three women at the event. Is that behavior we should reward with the appointment of mayor? In April, Francois accused other city council members of payoffs related to a lame closure regarding the North End Bar and Grill. Is that behavior we should reward with an appointment of mayor? Also in April, he questioned usage of the HBPD resources at Pier Plaza based on his late-night bike rides. As of today, Francois has not taken a ride along with the HBPD. Is that behavior we should reward with an appointment of mayor? This April, Francois walked into the Rams Beach football field during the Hermosa School field trip without correct district security clearance. Francois tried to hold up the 2023 Fiesta opening based on a $5 beer entry to the Beer Garden. He called someone at the City and Coastal Commission. How is it possible for the chamber to work with someone who tried to undermine their premier and beloved event? Is closing down the Fiesta something a council member or mayor should be doing? Francois was kicked out of the 2023 Fiesta Beer Garden for drinking. Is that behavior we should reward with an appointment of mayor? He missed three straight city council meetings, including the ones related to the budget. He has touted his hazy federal budget experience and expertise, which was a no-show, and left this year's budget study session early. In closing, Francois has not demonstrated the moral leadership for the privilege of representing Hermosa Beach as mayor. Francois has been bragging to many around town that he's going to be the next mayor. Has he earned that privilege? Before you have a duty to do what's best for the interests of the city, this is an election, not a rotation. I strongly support Rob Seaman, who has real experience in Hermosa, not the made-up stuff that is on Francois's website and that that he tended during the election. Do the right thing, make the tough call.
Michael Keegan.
Michael Keegan, Hermosa Beach. I look forward to the rotation of the mayor in the fashion that it was held for over 45 years. I think it worked out fine, and I didn't see people taking notes of what everyone did their whole life. I don't think that we should be up here judging what everyone does every week, whether they're, you know, surfing, getting a speeding ticket or a seatbelt ticket, or, you know, what they do with regard to the Chamber of Commerce, which has nothing to do with being mayor. I think it's a rotational ceremonial mayor. It has no more powers than any city council member. It worked fine for decades, and a group changed it, and they didn't make Hanny Van Gary the mayor, and he sued the city. He was upset about it, and we spent probably between Hanny's money he spent, and we spent a half million dollars over this issue. And no one ever brought up that if we had just let him be the mayor, would the town have just disintegrated? I mean, would things have just gone in chaos? Would we have maybe had the city burned down? I mean, this is really a lot about nothing. I mean, if it isn't broke, don't fix it. I would say just do the rotation and the form we've done for many decades and stop making everyone have hurt feelings. Let's just move through the ceremonial mayor. It's not a mayor with more power, or we should just vote to have an elected mayor. And let's stop this nonsense, because I don't think it should be a popularity contest. If this is the way it's going to be, we should then go ahead and make the mayor a voted-in position and then have four council members. Thank you.
Ray DeSault.
Madam Clerk, who's next?
Ray DeSault.
Ray DeSault, 4318th Court. Thank you all for serving. Michael Keegan is absolutely right on everything he said, our former council member and mayor. I hope you guys will stick to that. It is not surprising that we still have one or two residents, even after this weekend's near tragedy, who are willing to spout mistruths and vitriol and insults to try to harm other people despite knowing that there's just no need for that inflammatory rhetoric. This is a symbolic position. Everybody that gets elected to council was elected by residents of this community, and they elected them knowing that this mayoral rotation was traditional. And as Mr. Keegan pointed out, there's no extra powers that come with it, and there's nothing that it's going to impact even if there were a bad mayor, and I don't think Dean will be one. Dean has the heart of this community, close to him. That's all we can ask of any of you, is that you believe in this community and want to do the best you can. And we elected Dean Francois to city council, and he should be treated with the same respect that each of you expect to be treated with. Thank you for your time, and I wish you good luck.
Lynn Pope.
Good afternoon, gentlemen and ladies. One, I believe that this is an opportunity for us to embrace unity, to work together in our city and not be divisive. It's got to begin with me. It's got to begin with you. We want this unity. We need to express it. We need to express brotherly love. I respect the time that each of you has given Hermosa Beach. You've given up time from family, time from friends, and there are some people up here that really disagree with me about things, but you know what? I respect your positions and the effort that you're giving. And in the spirit of goodness and brotherly love, I ask us to be the Hermosa that is loving, embracing, allowing this normal transition to not be divisive in our town. Let's be leaders, and let's hope others follow our leadership and our stand for good. Thank you so much.
Julia Ann Roberts.
Hi, Julia Ann Roberts, 2030 Ardmore. I come here as a resident, also a member of Leadership Hermosa since 2014, and also one of the instructors of the course for two years in 2018 and 2019, also of the Government Accountability Office. But what I wanted to say is that I have known Dean for probably 10 years now. He's someone I can rely upon. He's someone I have seen out and about and intertwined in our community, someone I completely respect, and I can't imagine us jumping over or hopscotching an opportunity for someone we've all voted for in this community to be our mayor. And I was, I am looking forward to having him as my mayor of the city. He, for 2018 and 2019, he served for Leadership Hermosa and actually presented on numerous different business political opportunities in the city, and I was forever grateful. And I can't imagine taking that opportunity away from him. So, I think we need to just, as some of the other people have described, look at what the heart of this community is, who it is that we actually voted for, and come with the brotherly love. And we elected him, and he deserves a chance, and he needs that respect from all of us. Thanks.
Mayor, I do not have any other speaker cards.
All right. Is there anybody else in chambers wishing to comment? All right, hearing none. Mr. City Attorney, for this public comment period, are we in chambers only?
No, since this is the only time for public comment, we should go to the Zoom.
Do we have anyone online, Miss Madam Clerk?
We do. John Burry, your three minutes will begin once you're unmuted.
John Burry, good evening. It's easy to dismiss the role of mayor as simply ceremonial, especially in a system where conventions, we follow frequent rotation. But a large part of the role of the mayor is to chair, to ensure fair and orderly process and to lead the council, an important mandate of overseeing the work of the city manager. So whoever you choose to elect as the new mayor tonight, I hope that person is ready to be a servant leader, ready to put public service above personal agenda, ambition, or vanity projects, ready to lead without ego or arrogance, and to value the contributions of his colleagues, and more importantly, the residents that he serves. I hope he's prepared to ensure transparency in the decisions this council makes and in the information that city staff provide to inform those decisions, and sometimes to question their priorities and their performance. I hope he's nonpartisan, more prepared to listen, and less inclined to talk over residents and colleagues, and certainly not someone who resorts to personal attacks or to simply shutting off public or press comments instead of debating with fact. This outgoing mayor claimed on Friday evening that the city has a $90 million to $135 million shortfall against its plans, and yet he and the city manager still want to pursue an additional $100 million civic center vanity project despite that. Plan Hermosa was created in 2017. It's outdated, and incredibly, it won't be reviewed again until 2026. The Economic Development Strategy from 2022 is already gutted, and the downtown revitalization study from 2015 is long forgotten. So I hope our new mayor will be a champion for vision and long-range strategy and not just short-term bans, mandates, and tax rises, because along with the huge deficit, we have a clear pattern of gross overspend and long delays on important projects. The Clark Building would have taken eight years at at least six times its original budget. The Green Belt accessibility pass started at $200,000 and was promised even for free with state funding. Instead, it's now a $1 million bill for residents, park restrooms that end up being vastly over-engineered and over-budget, $20 million now for the city yard contractor lawsuits, the list goes on and on. I could single out the only person on that stage tonight who's presided over all of this, and I could question his qualifications and his motives, but I won't. Instead, I'll quote him in his own words. He said, "Government involves trial and error. You strive to account for all the information available, make the best decision for the community as a whole, and if you need to correct course, you do so." Well, we can only hope for better decisions and less error as we move forward, and of course, we can always vote for course correction. So good luck to the new mayor. May he serve us all with diligence, humility, respect, and above all, some simple common sense. Thank you. Thank you.
Let me pause for a second. The audio is not what it typically is in the room in terms of our ability to hear the online speakers, so can we take a moment and see if we can adjust that?
I thought maybe it was just me.
Mine from the car, though, because the other one sounded okay. Maybe he was on speakerphone.
He was the first.
I think he was the first one we had online, though.
Mayor, we do not have any other virtual hands raised at this time.
All right, so maybe a moot point at this point. All right, one last call in chambers. Anybody wishing to comment? Seeing and hearing no one, I close public comment and bring it back to the council. Madam Clerk, what's next on our agenda?
Next, we have item seven A, election of mayor and mayor pro tempore, and city council committee reorganization, July 2024. I have a short presentation for you. Consistent with Resolution 20-7265, the city council may elect any one of its members to serve as mayor and mayor pro tempore for a nine-point-six-month term. The discretionary criteria for election are outlined in Section Four of Resolution 20-7265. The lists of current committee assignments will be revised to reflect the new mayor and mayor pro tempore elected this evening, so that the changes will include the mayor to serve on the Los Angeles County City Selection Committee, and the mayor to the South Bay City Sanitation District Board of Directors, and mayor pro tempore or council member to serve as alternate director. Reassigning committee delegates/alternates to the remaining committees, or reaffirming current committee assignments, along with adding or deleting committees as appropriate, will be considered at a future meeting. Tonight, we are only updating those two committees, and such action is consistent with council policy to maintain permanent representatives wherever possible. Additionally, tonight, we also publish an addendum/agenda to include a couple of changes to the specific item. One change would be for recommendation number four, to approve a resolution to appoint the mayor to the South Bay City Sanitation District Board of Directors, and mayor pro tempore or council member to serve as alternate. So we were dismissing that resolution. We went ahead and added it to this agenda item, and just updated the recommendation, not on the staff report, but we did on the agenda itself, which is available for public view and is also in the back table. Additionally, we did update the committee information sheet to display the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority instead of ICRMA, which was our previous relationship with them, so that information is now updated. And I have no other comments at this time related to the staff report, and we are available to answer any questions or open nominations.
All right. All right, Madam Clerk, thank you. I believe this is the point where you take this from me, is that right?
That is correct. So I'll go ahead and take a request that the gap will be passed on to the clerk at this time.
All right. Thank you. All right.
So with that, it is now time for the council reorganization, and the city council may make nominations just for mayor, just for mayor pro tempore, or both, for a nine-point-six month term, ending upon the election of another mayor. And nominations are now open.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. I invite nominations for both mayor and mayor pro tempore, and let me start by looking to my left, to our newest colleagues. Gentlemen, do you have one or more nominations for the next leaders of the city council?
No.
Mayor Pro Tempore.
Not at this point. I'll defer to my other colleagues.
All right. Looking to my right, anyone wishing to take?
Mr. Mayor, I nominate Dean Francois for mayor and Rob Seaman for mayor pro tempore.
Please, please, please.
All right. We have a nomination?
Do we have any other nominations at this time?
Looking to my left, any other nominations?
No.
To my right?
I nominate Rob Seaman to the position of mayor.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, we have two nominations. Do we do the first nomination?
We do. We do have to confirm that each of those individuals accepts the nomination. So you do the first one, which was from Councilmember DeToye of mayor pro tempore as mayor, and Councilmember Seaman as mayor pro tempore.
All right, so this is not how we usually do it with substitute motions? This is the first nomination is the one first voted on. So you gentlemen have been nominated as the next mayor and mayor pro tempore. Do you accept?
I do.
All right.
Yes.
Let the record reflect. Affirmative nods by both. Perhaps we can keep the clapping to a minimum so that everybody has a chance to speak, and we can hear everybody. Thank you. All right. Mr. City Attorney, it's time for the city clerk to call the roll, I assume.
Correct.
All right, correct. We have, well, we'll have, I'll invite discussion in a moment. We have a new electronic voting platform, but we're doing old-fashioned roll call votes this evening. Before I ask the city clerk to call the question, do any of my colleagues have any comments that we should share?
I'll kick it off. I'll try to keep it short, since I'm hoping to get home before my kids go to bed. But first off, just thank everyone for being here. One thing that is great about Hermosa is we're all neighbors, first and foremost, so we can walk away from conversations, different perspectives, and we still know where everyone lives, and we'll run into them at Vons, and down in Pier Plaza, on the Strand, wherever, at the parks. I will say that I have listened to allegations that have been shared from the community. I hear you, but all of us up here must do better and be better role models for everyone in our community. Civility in politics means engaging with each other respectfully, listening as much as we speak, and seeking common ground even when we disagree. Especially, I know one of the speakers mentioned it this last weekend, we must do better. Violence has no place in this country, let alone in politics, and we need to be better role models for our youth and for every one of our members in the community. So with that, you heard my motion to traditional pattern election, whatever it is, and have my pledge, and hopefully all of our pledges, to elevate our conversation and do better for everyone in our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any additional comments? Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At first, I'd like to address one of the speakers who stood up and talked about brotherhood and civility, and that same speaker has, for years, done nothing but threaten and harass, particularly our city staff. There have been emails and threats to our city council members. I can go through the laundry list. I'll start with one that was sent to one of our council members. "You pushed it far enough. Sleeping giant is coming for you and your family's soul." I've got a laundry list of similar emails and threats that have been made by that speaker, who stood up and clapped when we talked about brotherly love and unity. So I hope he starts with the man in the mirror and discontinues with his threats. I can go through a laundry list of horrible, horrible conversations that he's had, and maybe I should for the record. This is the city's latest game? Because I will rain on you like hellfire. Talk to Maya. Change your tune or be effing ready. Did you think I was dead? I'm not. I'm wide awake again. Time for fun. Fire that employee or get ready for the most miserable life you can possibly imagine. We're sick of her trying to ruin a town she doesn't live in. I'm awake and ready. Use your imagination. Multiply times fifty." And I can go on, and I can go on, and I can go on. So the point of the matter is, before you stand up here and talk about brotherhood and unity and civility, it starts with the man in the mirror. So I hope you take an honest look at the man in the mirror, because your tone has been part of the problem. This is an election. It's nothing to do with popularity. It's not a rotation. There's nothing automatic about it. It's not, nor should it ever be, automatic. Being mayor is not a participation position. You know, Maya Angelou famously said, "When people show you who they are, believe them the first time." She said that people reveal their true nature and their actions and behavior, and that if someone shows you a lack of integrity or dishonesty early on, it's likely to happen again in the future. Last year, I nominated Rob Seaman to represent our city as the mayor pro tempore. Rob was and remains the better candidate, and has shown the community for years exactly who he is. We know who Rob is. He's shown us. Rob has honorably and selflessly served Hermosa Beach for many, many years. He has a ton of experience. Rob is prepared. Rob does the work, and most importantly, Rob is honest and is a man of great integrity. Rob possesses the qualities one expects our mayors to have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments before we call the roll? Mayor Pro Tempore.
Thank you. Honorable councilmembers, colleagues, fellow citizens, you know, I want to thank people for coming down and participating in the process, and it's never easy. I look forward to embarking on a new administration with my mayor pro tempore, Councilmember Seaman, with the two newest on the council. You know, things have been improving on this city council, and I think that there's been lots of split decisions, and they don't always go the same way. There's different people that bond differently on different issues and items, and that's good. It's been a good dialogue, and I think we can continue to maintain and improve our decorum at our meetings, maybe avoid criticizing members of the public that come down and speak, whether we like them or whether we don't, whether we agree with them or whether we don't. We're here to listen, and this is what it's all about at City Hall. And I'm hoping we can move forward on that, build on the progress that we've made, and, you know, if I'm voted in, I want to thank my colleagues for expressing their support and trust in me, and I look forward to working together for a betterment for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for comments. Anybody else? Madam Clerk, she called the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
No.
Councilmember DeToye?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tempore Francois?
Aye.
Mayor Massey?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations to our new mayor, Francois, and Mayor Pro Tempore, Seaman.
Madam Clerk, before we proceed, do we want to just quickly change seats and continue with the committee assignments, and then go on to the rest of the agenda?
I believe we're going to have pictures while we change the nameplates, and we'll have you back, and we'll conduct a roll call.
All right, so we're taking like a five-minute recess? All right. Thank you.
Justin. Once we switch seats, we will have an opportunity to speak again, right?
I think so, yeah.
Well, I hope so, because I have something to say, but I...
I'll take it, please.
It wasn't during the...
........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ Okay, there is a motion and a second, and roll call, please.
Councilmember Massey.
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Councilmember Detoy.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Seaman.
Aye.
Mayor Francois.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have item four of the recommended action for this item 7A, and this is to appoint, approve resolution to appoint new mayor Francois to the South Bay City Sanitation District Board of Directors, and Mayor Pro Tem Por, Seaman, or another council member to serve as alternate director.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if Rob's available, so I was gonna see if Justin wanted to go sit on the sanitation district board meeting.
It's a very glamorous position, no question about it, but I have served previously on the sanitation district board of directors, and you have done a far better job than I did, Councilmember Detoy, so I would have you do that. Thank you for thinking of me.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll happy move the -- make a motion that you, as the mayor, would be appointed to the South Bay City Sanitation District Board of Meeting Directors, and Mayor Pro Tem serve as an alternate.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. Assuming that the Mayor Pro Tem wants to serve as the alternate.
That's fine. Absolutely.
It's a great job. I enjoy it. They might pick on it a little bit, but --
Many years' experience with sewers. I'm ready to go.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Massey.
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Councilmember Detoy.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Por, Seaman.
Aye.
Mayor Francois.
Aye.
Motion carries. And next, you have item 7B, recognition of outgoing mayor.
Okay. We got a microphone down here, right? There we go. Okay. So at this time, the mayor presents the gavel plaque to the former mayor, outgoing mayor. Beautiful. Okay. Okay.
Sorry, telling him.
I've gotten a lot of guidance from -- he's been great. He's been a great mayor, and I've enjoyed serving under him, and man, I've learned a lot from him, and this guy's talented, let me tell you.
Perfect. So you can give me the plaque.
So we have -- my goodness, what do we have here? Look at this. This is the Honorable Justin Massey. City of Hermosa Beach does hereby extend you to our sincere thanks and appreciation for your leadership and dedicated service to the community.
Thank you.
Okay, a few speeches now here.
No, just thank you all for being here, and best of luck to you, Mr. Mayor, and you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I have all the confidence in you.
Thank you so much.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I might suggest, I think next on the agenda is where our peers and partners come up to present certificates to the outgoing mayor. And what I suggest to expedite that is that all the folks who have those, we come on up, we open them, we take a photo, and if any of them want to actually say a few things, they can, but we don't have to go one by one.
Sounds great. Who do we have here? I think we have Justin Waldron from Holly Mitchell's office, right? And goodness, we have Manhattan Beach Councilmember David Lesser. Okay, there we are.
Are we doing photo first and then saying?
Photo first and then saying some -- only if you want to add anything to what's already in their certificates. But I know everybody, we want to get to the reception at Hook and Plow, and I know you all have come a long way, so. So, thank you, Tom Backley from the Beach Cities Health District, David Lesser, my good friend and fellow COG Board Member from the City of Manhattan Beach, and Jessalyn from Supervisor Mitchell's office. If any of you feel compelled to share a few words, feel free, but you don't have to, because I'll go ahead and read the certificates.
Real quick, I tried to intercept your beautiful county scroll from the mail, but our graphics department put it in the mail, so this is a placeholder. Your actual official county one is on the way. I wanted to say that, and I did want to also just say, under your leadership, the City of Hermosa thrived, and it was great to work with you, and Supervisor Mitchell thanks you for your service to Hermosa Beach on behalf of the Second District of L.A. County.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
This is also a placeholder. We are small beach cities, Manhattan Beach and Hermosa Beach, and together, we better represent our residents. And you, Justin, have been a terrific mayor in ways that I don't think most people realize. As you mentioned in passing, we've served together on the South Bay City's Council of Governments, working on issues perhaps not as sexy as sewers, but working on public transportation, working on environmental issues, many issues that are not in the news. And you were always prepared, you always have thoughtful comments, and everybody in those bodies has listened to you, and it's been my pleasure to be your friend. On behalf of the City of Manhattan Beach, its city council and its residents, thank you for your services, Mayor.
Thank you, Justin.
Justin, on behalf of the Beach Cities Health District, thank you, and we'll keep it at that.
Thank you, Tom.
That covers it. There we are. Okay, we just head back up to the deus for final council member comments.
Thank you.
Okay, any of my colleagues wish to make some any comments at this time?
And, Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Sure.
This is also optional. I know exactly how you all feel about me, because we live and breathe this stuff together, and we talk to each other, so don't feel obligated by any stretch. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
To my left.
Yeah, I wrote this giant speech for tonight. Thank you, Justin.
That was it?
Yeah. All right. Hard to do this with the ones. Yeah, that's true. Mr. Mayor, would you like to go first?
Go, go right ahead.
Okay. So, hello, Hermosa Beach. Really want to thank all of you for being here tonight. I look out here at this audience here, which is just a small representation of all of us in Hermosa, and I see so many friends, so many new friends, people I've met just in the last two years, some of you I've known for 12, 15, 20 years, and I appreciate every single one of you, and thank you so much for being here tonight. I also like to say what an honor it is to be here tonight and to be selected as mayor pro tem. As you know, every nine months or so, all of us up here, we all move over one chair into a new chair, and these chairs might all look alike, and they are in many ways, but they're really not the same. The one in the middle, for instance, brings an opportunity to set a tone for the council, to build consensus, to represent the city, and to move our city forward. In spite of what some of you think, this position of mayor is not ceremonial. It's by far not ceremonial. Sure, there's ribbons to cut, and there's places to go, and you wave, and you take a picture, and all of that, and you make of it what you want, but there's so much more to it than that. This position takes honor, responsibility, and commitment. It's a job, and it takes a lot more time than you'd think. You know, this morning, we started the election cycle with the candidates workshop today, and to those people who are out there who was at that workshop, or maybe you're at home and you're thinking about running for council, I have something to tell you. If you think for a minute that being mayor or sitting in any of these seats is ceremonial, you're very, very wrong. There's so much more to this, and I hope you understand that responsibility and you accept it before you make the commitment to run, and then if you win, God bless you for winning and working and trying to help the city. We appreciate that very much, but know that it's not going to be just taking a picture and cutting a ribbon. There's a lot of work to this, and it means something very important to the city. The five of us are chosen to make decisions for everybody here. That's not an easy thing to do. I thought it wouldn't be too terrible. My years of experience in a planning commission, how tough could it be? Well, it's tough. It's very difficult, and I hope everyone who considers that job is prepared for it. So besides that seat, the one to the left of that where I'm sitting right now, it presents an opportunity to help in that effort to help the city. It's an opportunity to be a role model. It's an opportunity to prepare for the future and stand at the ready if needed. We can all think about one day being mayor, but being prepared to be mayor is certainly another thing altogether. And finally, I'd like to say that all of us can lead from any one of these chairs. You know, during the last two years, I have witnessed some pretty remarkable things come from city council, no matter who sat in which chair. We can all lead, all five of us can lead up here, and what a great government we have that five people from any position on this table can lead the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. To my right, Councilmember Seaman. Jackson. Okay. I want to thank everyone for attending. It's been great to see the public input we've had in making our beach city, our little beach city, even better. I want to thank the mayor for his service. I learned a lot. You are keen and quick, and you got it together, man, I'll tell you. You really have -- I've learned a lot, being on your team, and I feel we're embarking on a new chapter with the two newly elected council members. We've got kind of a new administration that we're going to put through here, and we're going to continue to work and maintain our open, respectful communication with our community, and we're going to listen to everyone's concerns. This is really important, whether we agree with people or whether we don't, whether we like them or whether we don't, even if we despise them as human beings. We're here to listen to people because we're here to work for all the people. That's really important, and our goal, I think, is to create an inclusive environment where everyone feels heard and valued. And I think we can get there. We can make great strides to improve city communications. You know, the mayor and mayor pro tem acts as the communications subcommittee of this council, and I think we can, the two of us can really work together, improve our communications, improve our media relations, our press relations. There's so many things we can do, and I just want, I would like to build on that progress we've made and continue to elevate our council meetings. You know, it's surely needed as a model of decorum and civility and collaboration. I think we can do it. I think we've made a lot of strides. We can do more, and I want to thank everyone. Thank you all for coming, and thank for your support. Thank you. Now, I'd like to invite everyone to join us for reception at the Hook and Plow, located at 425 Pierre Avenue. Hopefully, I got that address right here. That's what's written down here. And please come. Please come and enjoy. And with that, we thank you, everyone, for this special meeting. It is now adjourned. Thank you.[1444.83]